You all, or in Arabic, Assalamualaikum. My name is Asma Frouk Sheikh, and on behalf of the ICN School District Engagement Committee, my co-host, Ms. Muniba Ali and I, welcome you to tonight's Meet the District 203 Candidates event. Before we begin, we would like to open tonight's event with a Quranic recitation and translation from two Naperville students, Yusuf Sheikh and Zahra Ali.
Assalamualaikum and peace and blessings upon all of you. My name is Yusuf Sheikh and I go to Jefferson Junior High School. I'm going to be reciting chapter four, verse thirty-six in the Holy Quran.
The translation of Surah Nisa, verse thirty-six. Worship Allah and do not associate with Him anything, and be good to parents and to kinsmen and orphans and the needy, and the close neighbor and the distant neighbor, and the companion at your side and the wayfarer, and to those servants who are owned by you. Surely Allah does not like those who are arrogant or proud. Thank you so much to our students Yusuf Sheikh and Zahra Ali. You can go ahead and mute yourselves. So I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. I actually have been in District 203 for the past six years. I have three children in the district. I have one at Naperville North High School, and I have two at Jefferson Junior High School. I am also a product of the DuPage County Public School Systems, and I serve here on the ICN School District Engagement Committee to advocate for marginalized students' voices. I'd like to pass the mic over to my co-host, Ms. Muniba Ali, who will also share her introduction.
Thank you, Asma. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Muniba Ali. I have been on this School District Engagement Committee since its inception a couple of years ago. It's been a pleasure working with the team over here. In addition, I'm also the principal of the full-time school at ICN, which is located out of our Ogden Building. We have a mix of students that attend 204, 203, and some in 202 and 308. It's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to host you today. And I will just get started by sharing my screen and welcoming everyone briefly. So please bear with me as I fumble with my technology. All right. I think everyone else can see my screen now.
Yeah.
So once again.
Well, thank you so much. Muniba, if you can go to the next screen, please.
Oh, okay. Are you going to set the agenda first and then?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So we will be just, you know, quickly going through the agenda. Ms. Muniba, she'll be sharing the vision and mission for our committee, and we'll also be having some special guests from the Illinois Muslim Civic Coalition. And then we'll be going right into the meat of tonight's program, you know, learning more about our District 203 candidates and how they will be serving our school community. So Muniba, if you want to go ahead and, you know, share our committee's vision and mission, please.
Sure. So this is the official welcome address. On behalf of the ICN School District Engagement Committee, welcome candidates. We are so grateful that you care enough to run for this position. And participants, thank you for recognizing the importance of these elections. The choices you make will impact the opportunities and the choices that your students, our students, our children are going to have in the education system. We urge you to learn as much as you can about each candidate so you can make the most informed decision. With that, let me briefly tell you about ICN School District Engagement Committee. In front of you, you see the vision, the mission statement, and the partnerships we have. Essentially, we would like for all students to be treated with equity and inclusion in the school system. And for our part, we are here to represent the Muslim sector of that student body. Our mission is to advance the ICN community's vision of representation in local school districts by increasing awareness and participation in the school districts' diversity outreach programs. We are proud to partner with District 203, as well as other local school districts. And I'm going to share this information. One of our excellent resources and a wonderful person is Dr. Rakina Leaks. She is the Director of Diversity Inclusion in District 203. Her information is here, and I'm sure it can be available upon request, or it might be published in the documentation later on. But we're so happy that 203 is actually proactive in its efforts at, you know, diversity and advocating for all students. With that, let's move ahead. At this time, before I do this, I'm going to introduce Dina Hubble from the Illinois Muslim Civic Coalition. And she would like to ask for your support on a very important issue. So please, Dina, go ahead. I'm going to stop sharing for a minute. Dina, are you there? Have you lost Dina?
I don't see her on the list. I don't know if she dropped.
Maybe while we wait for her, shall I go on and just go over the routine of the evening with the four rounds? Okay, so I'm going to share again. Hopefully she'll be back. So this evening will be conducted in four rounds. Round one, we will have two minutes to give an introduction. In round two, they will answer question one, two minutes each. In round three, question two. And in round four will be the final question. Each time, we want to have the opportunity for different people to go first. So the order in which they will be asked to answer the questions will be different. We already said they will be given two minutes, and I will be the timekeeper. So when there is one minute left, I will hold up the one-minute card. When there are thirty seconds left, I will hold up the thirty-second card. And when time is over, I'll be holding up the red card. So please keep your eyes on me. And we would like everyone to know that the candidates will not give in any questions prior to tonight's event. I will stop sharing again, and hopefully we can.
Yes, I think what we'll have to do is have her share the information at the end. So if that's okay, let's get started.
She's on.
Yeah, sorry about that. I had to switch computers. Mine froze at the worst time.
That's okay, Ms. Hubble. So why don't you go ahead? We did kind of give a brief introduction, but the mic's all yours.
Okay, let me share.
I made you a presenter, so she should be able to share, so.
Okay, can we share it?
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so my name is Dina, and I am the Communications and Operations for the Illinois Muslim Civic Coalition. So we are a coalition of over a hundred and fifty partners and allies, organizations. And we do the work of civic justice, and we do it through six initiatives. So I'll just go through the ones that we are currently at the top of our list right now. So the first one is advocacy and policy. So we have, currently, we have four bills in the General Assembly, and I can show you these right here. So I can do like a little short description of each one. So we have the Reverence for Diversity in Illinois Amendment. So that is to, we want to amend both of office to protect and honor the diversity of Illinois. So we want to make sure there is no hate speech or anything coming out of candidates once they get into office, like on their Twitter or on their Facebook. So then, you know, they have that oath that they will protect the diversity of all us. The next one is Cross-Cultural Mediation and Among Students Act. And this is, so if a student gets bullied based on something like being called China virus or being called like a terrorist, we don't want them just to get like, you know, slapped on the wrist, like, you know, you're suspended or anything like that. We want to actually have mediation. So then these kids have to confront each other and learn from each other so this doesn't show up in their workplace later on or just in their future. Another one is Inclusive Athletic Attire Act. And this one is to modify the school uniform in sports. So this could be like for religious reasons or just to feel comfortable, depending on what kind of level of modesty you want or just based on your identity, who you, you know, how you identify yourself. So and then our fourth one is the Contributions and History of Muslims in America Bill. And this one is to honor Muslims in America in the curriculum. So we can have, you know, lessons about Muhammad Ali and how he was a Muslim and also a champ, about scientists, how Muslims are not just what you see on the news. So and then our fifth one is a Muhammad Ali Day Revolution. So we want to create a holiday for Muhammad Ali on his birthday, which is January seventeenth. And that way, we can also talk about him in schools and just talk about what he brought to the country. So that's our first initiative. And how we need help with that would be, share these bills. Call your legislator. Just let them know that this is important to us. And these bills aren't just for Muslims. These bills are for, you know, everybody in all communities. So we had, we've had the Asian American Advancing Justice sign onto these bills. So there's a lot of help with this. So voter engagement. So in 2020, we made voting important. And now in 2021, we want to make it a habit. So we want to, we want to, oh, yeah. So we're going to do phone banking. We're, we have our Make a Vote plan. So if you have not registered to vote, you can go to our page. And if you click on it, it goes to vote.org, and it lets you know how to register to vote, get a mail-in ballot, et cetera. And let's see. Engage and Impact. So another Initiative Four is the Engage and Impact. And we've been meeting with thirty-plus officials. And what we do is we bring what our community needs to the officials. So we're kind of building bridges that way. And then Initiative Six is the Illinois Muslim Report. So this is a report that is being done to find out who Muslims in America are. So we want to know what are our needs, who we are, and so we can have a better future going forward. And I think that's all. I hope I didn't take too much time. Thank you so much, Ms. Hubble. Really appreciate it. And I hope that, you know, our school community can definitely try their very best to support these bills. It definitely takes, you know, the greater, greater community to, again, help. So thank you so much. So without further ado, we're going to get right into our discussion with our candidates. Again, we want to thank all of our candidates who are with us here today for their time this evening. I'd just like to quickly go around and introduce each candidate to our community. So when I call upon your name, if you could just wave your hand, that'll be great. So our, and this is in alphabetical order. So our first candidate is Thomas Andrew Binkowski.
Hello.
Our second candidate here today is Mr. Charles Kush.
Good evening, everybody.
Our third candidate here today is Ms. Kristen Fitzgerald.
Hello, thanks for having me.
Thank you for coming. Our fourth candidate here today is Kristi Helm.
Hi, everyone. Happy to be here. Thanks for hosting.
Welcome. Our fifth candidate here today is Ms. Amanda McMillan.
Hello, thanks for having me.
Our pleasure. Our sixth candidate here today is Robert Reed.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
And our last candidate here today is Ms. Donna Watke.
Hi, thank you so much for having us.
I would like to note that there are two additional candidates who are not able to attend this evening's event, Mr. Adam Russo and Mr. Bill Egan. So without further ado, we will get started. We've already explained the format of tonight's event. The first question is fairly simple. Please share a little bit about yourself and what strains or experiences you will bring serving on the Board of Education. We'd like to start in alphabetical order with Mr. Binkowski.
Sure. Hi, thanks for having me here. I'm grateful for the opportunity to talk to you. So I am a Naperville native. I grew up in Naperville, actually a graduate of Jefferson Junior High School, myself. And so, you know, after I left, went to college and started a family, my wife started a family, you know, we decided to move back here. And one of the reasons that we moved back here was because of the schools. You know, I'm a product of this school. You know, I really didn't appreciate it until I left to see what a fantastic, you know, path has put me on for the rest of my life by being able to attend such a fantastic school district. You know, I know this school year has been difficult. It's been unprecedented, whatever, you know, you want to call it. But, you know, I think we're going to get through it, you know, obviously. And, you know, I think that, you know, my goal for, for running for the Board is to make sure that when we do go back, that, you know, it's going to be better than ever. And just try to ensure that, that when the kids get back into school, that it's a better place than when we left. You know, this means, might mean providing opportunities to attend school in ways which make families feel comfortable. And I'm sure all the details of that will get worked out and making sure that all the kids get, make up for learning loss that might have happened during this pandemic. You know, making sure that there's opportunities in education for everybody, no matter what their abilities are, no matter what their school choice is. And so, you know, I think that I, I think the district has the chance to really set a new standard for excellence here. You know, school is being reimagined on a, you know, bi-weekly basis. I think that, you know, we really have the chance here to do something wonderful. You know, I think that I have the ability to lend my voice specifically to the Board in a unique way. I'm a parent of four children and that currently go to the school district, high school, junior high, and an elementary school. I'm also a teacher. I'm a professor of computer science at the University of Chicago. I am also a scientist. I do drug discovery research on infectious diseases. I think, you know, the combination of these things allow me to have some expertise and objectivity and understanding some of the factors that are going to help us get back to school in the best possible way. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next candidate is Mr. Charles Kush.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Okay, first of all, good evening, everyone. My name is Charles Kush, and I currently serve on the Board of Education for Naperville District 203. I've been a Naperville resident since relocating here with my wife and with my wife Jean and our family in 2010. I've got three children, one grandson, and two dogs. Professionally, I have twenty-six years of marketing and sales experience, all in healthcare. I currently work for Hollister, which is a healthcare manufacturer that's headquartered in Libertyville, Illinois. In terms of why I'm running, what I think I bring to the Board, I'm running for reelection because, basically, for the same reason I ran in the first place. And that is because I believe I can make a difference. And I also have a passion for helping others achieve their full potential. And that's played out both in my professional life. I serve as a mentor for many students or many folks over the course of my career. And then also in my work, obviously, on the Board, but in other volunteer activities as well. And I believe the district has a responsibility to provide a learning environment where every student has the opportunity to maximize their full potential. And I want to continue to be part of helping the district fulfill that responsibility. I have two daughters who are graduates of the district. And, you know, I've seen firsthand how their time at 203 has really prepared them to be successful at the next level. And I want to be able to provide that same thing and continue to pay that forward to the others in the community as well. You know, over the course of my career, I've been very successful in uncovering needs and developing creative solutions. And those problem-solving skills are skills that I have and will continue to bring to the Board if I'm fortunate enough to be reelected. So those, that's a little bit about myself and why I'm running. So thank you for the opportunity. And I wanted to just thank the ICN and the committee for this opportunity and this forum this evening. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kush. Our next candidate is Ms. Kristen Fitzgerald.
Hi, I'm Kristen Fitzgerald. I'm a mom of three daughters in District 203 and the president of our Board of Education, running for reelection. I started my career in 1993 as a Congressional Education Policy Advisor, which gave me a rich understanding both of education policy as well as a deep appreciation for our schools. My husband and our girls moved to District 203 in 2005. And unfortunately, I lost my husband to cancer shortly after that. When that happened, though, I stepped back from everything I was doing to focus on being a mom. I started my second career as the volunteer in our schools. And I have volunteered extensively for home and school, for school-family-community partnership, and with the Success Organization, which was founded by our district families to empower African-American students and other students of color and ensure their success. I bring both the policy experience as well as my volunteer leadership to my Board of Education leadership. I believe the education of our children is the most important job we have as a community. When I first ran for the Board in 2013, I had three goals: to champion the success of every student, to establish a strong partnership with our community, and to budget responsibly in support of those goals. And over the past eight years, I've dedicated myself to advocating for the success of every student, and we made enormous strides. Our work to increase summer school, early childhood, to strengthen our social and emotional learning, to establish equitable communities, to close achievement gaps. Those have resulted in District 203 having the highest number of exemplary schools in the state of Illinois. We've made great progress, but we have more to do, and the pandemic has added to our challenges. And over this very challenging year for students, parents, teachers, and our whole community, I've worked to listen to and understand the deep concerns of all in our community, to lead with empathy, to prioritize the health and safety of our students and staff, and above all, to support our students' needs, whether they're learning remotely or in person. I'm committed to continuing my advocacy for all students and families in District 203. And I believe that my work in policy, my volunteer leadership, and my Board service have uniquely prepared me to help our community overcome the challenges of the pandemic and continue making great progress for students.
Thank you so much. Our next candidate, Ms. Kristi Helm.
Hi there. Thank you again so much for hosting today. I'm very excited to be here. Again, my name is Kristi Helm. I moved to Naperville in June of 2017, and I moved here specifically for this. I'm a single mom to a third-grade daughter, and I really enjoy volunteering in her classroom, at school events, and as a room parent. But my passion for education doesn't end in just my personal life. In my professional life, I have my bachelor's degree in sociology. Throughout my college career, I really focused on studying the inequalities in the education system. In my professional career, I've worked as an elementary teacher in a private school. I also worked in educational sales, so working with large school districts to provide test preparation services to their programs. Those programs were data-driven and research-based and proved pro to be successful in the schools. And then most recently, prior to COVID, I was the manager of operations at an educational nonprofit organization in DuPage County. So I worked directly with students on things like financial literacy, entrepreneurship skills, and college and career readiness. Should I be elected as a school board member? My three top priorities would be, number one, obviously, the COVID-19 pandemic. So looking at ways to get kids back in school, but also offering options for families that maybe don't feel so safe doing that. And then as well, offering supplemental resources to some of our families who have been hit really hard with the pandemic and the learning loss that our children have experienced. Also, continuing District 203's efforts towards diversity and inclusion. I think that it's really, really important for all of our students in the district to have an opportunity, to have an equitable education. And finally, making sure that all of the students in our district have the mental health services that they need. I think the pandemic has hit all of us really hard, myself included. And so I think it's really, really important for us to focus on the needs of the students. So between, you know, my, kind of my experience as a District 203 parent, my professional career, my education, I think that I really could make a valuable board member for the whole four-year term beyond just the COVID-19 issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Helm. Can you enable your video, please?
Yeah, it should be. Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought it was.
I didn't want to interrupt you while you were speaking.
No, that's okay. No, it definitely, it was on before, so I'm not sure how it got turned off. Can you see me now?
No.
Okay.
Well, that's okay. While you figure that out, I will go on to our next candidate. Our next candidate is Ms. Amanda McMillan.
Hi, hello. Thank you so much for having me. I just want to make sure you can all hear me okay.
Yes.
There's a mute issue. You know, we have so many Zoom meetings and, you know, that unmuting thing. So thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it. I am a first-time candidate running for the Naperville School Board. And I'm really running with three priorities in mind. One, that we ensure that we have the resources to reopen responsibly, full-time, and safely for all students. And second, that we want to make sure that District 203 creates a very intentional and integrated diversity, equity, inclusion plan throughout the entire district. I know we've made some really great strides, but there's still areas that we could continue to grow there. And three, also to continue to commit to being fiscally responsible with the school board budget and ensure that students have the resources needed to match their technological, their curricular, their mental health needs. I'm a mother of three beautiful children that currently go to school in District 203. And so I have been living the funness of working from home and teaching the kids every single day. I'm also a social worker and have been working in the field for over twenty years. Fifteen of those years, I've been working in nonprofit management, which means that my job is literally to come up with solution-oriented tactics to community issues. Currently, I'm part of a statewide organization that has been helping youth-serving agencies throughout the entire state continue to provide those mandatory frontline services safely through COVID-19 and coming up with solutions and sharing resources. And I think that's something that can be really helpful in this situation. I have experience working on boards, being, serving for four years my children's preschool school board for four years. And I know what it's like to provide oversight to heads of schools and superintendents by asking the difficult questions, ensuring fiscal responsibility of the taxpayers' dollars. And it's because of this personal and professional connection and experience that I think I'd be an excellent candidate for school board.
Thank you so much, Ms. McMillan. Mr. Robert Reed, you're next.
Good evening, and thank you again for hosting us. I want to appreciate, I appreciate everybody joining tonight to learn about this. It's obviously a very important topic. As you said, my name is Robert Reed. I'm a father of two. I have a son at Lincoln and a daughter at Maplebrook. I am husband to a wonderful compassionate woman who has a private practice in counseling, where she deals mostly with PTSD and children's anxiety disorders. Previous to that, she ran a nonprofit rate prices center down in Kekke, Illinois, so we understand what it's like to deal with tough situations here. We are only a four-year resident of Naperville. We moved here specifically for the schools. I have a triple-major bachelor's degree from Lewis University in Romeoville, Illinois, and a master's degree from the University of Notre Dame. I'm currently the Chief Operations Officer for the International Bank of Chicago. And previous to that, I've held various roles in the financial institutions, building operations globally with different cultures to deal with different regulators. uh with different cultures to deal with different regulators throughout the uh world. Uh, I think the unique experience that I can bring to this is that I've spent my career uh developing operations in various functions to meet scalability, regulatory, and personnel needs of organizations, cultures, and companies. So ultimately, what I can do is help operationalize what's going on here as we look to come out of this pandemic to make sure that all are included in what they need to learn and the way they need to learn. I think that's the piece that is uh currently missing, is that some of the students are falling behind because they're not getting the education in the manner that suits them best. And to your earlier slide, uh making sure that all are included in the way that they feel safe and comfortable is the important goal of this year in the election of the school board. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reed. And our last candidate, Ms. Donna Watki.
Thank you to ICN for hosting our event this evening. My name's Donna Watki, and um I have a passion for education and serving our community. I'm currently serving in my eighth year on the Board of Education while being vice president for the last four years. I've earned a master's in educational administration and a bachelor's in mathematics and athletic training. I've been serving students in Naperville for twenty-nine years. I began as a mathematics teacher at Naperville North High School in nineteen ninety-two and taught there for eight years. When I had my third son, I transitioned out of the classroom and turned my focus to being a community contributor by volunteering for ten home and school committees, coaching soccer tests, and over the last six years, cross-country at Naperville Central, and uh leadership in Boy Scouts as committee chair and adult leader at Philmont. There are many initiatives that I've supported while on the board, including the Digital Learning Initiative, which allowed us to pivot quickly into remote learning, a dedicated focus on closing achievement gaps and meeting the needs of all students, bringing all-day kindergarten to District Two Oh Three, supporting our nationally-known social-emotional learning program, the hiring of our Director of Equity and Inclusion, who you've already highlighted. She, uh Dr. Rakita Leaks, has developed a comprehensive, along with uh some of you on the on the team, and and I've had the opportunity to serve on that team as well, developed a comprehensive equity plan to represent the needs of all students, and so many more initiatives. Um, as a board member, you have to find a balance in funding and maintaining our high level of excellence in education while keeping our taxes low and realizing savings for our taxpayers. So over the last eight years, we've been able to save the taxpayer thirty-two point seven million dollars while still having the highest number of exemplary schools for unit district in the state of Illinois. My goals include doing everything we can to get our students back into full-time school while allowing options for those who are not ready, meeting the needs of all students while maintaining safety for all, focusing on communication and continuing transparency, and high expectations for our district administrators, and continued financial responsibility with our taxpayer dollars so that we only levy what is needed. I've been honored to serve our community in this role and hope to utilize my experience to earn your vote and to continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Watki. Next, we will be going on to our next round. Our next question is a bit heavy, so I will repeat it twice. How would you work on current school policies to make them more equitable and inclusive for marginalized students from different race, ethnic, religious, and special needs backgrounds? Again, how would you work on current school policies to make them more equitable and inclusive for marginalized students from different race, ethnic, religious, and special needs backgrounds? We'd like to start off with Mr. Reed first.
Sure, and thank you for the question. So uh I think the first thing and and the foremost thing that you need to do in a situation like that is to listen to those students and those cultures and families to understand what they need. Let's not assume we know. Let's assume that we don't know and go from there. I think it's important to hear their voices, whether we're talking about uh for items during the pandemic now or whether we're talking about clubs and intermurals uh after this is uh hopefully over here in the next year or so. I think that we have to start committees and groups to understand what those needs are. Look at the policies that are set up at the state level and how they govern our Two Oh Three districts, since most of them are uh based on state mandates, and then work with the local uh officials in our area to get those votes and things that we need at the state level uh brought up into the state legislature to get policies changed. Anything that we can change currently now uh without having to go through some kind of law pass, we go through the proper channels, we handle the proper governance, and we get those passed now to make everybody feel inclusive. We have zero tolerance policy on things like racial comments and racism. We have zero tolerance policy on on things that would make others feel uncomfortable. And to your earlier point, uh the Mrs. Hubble's uh had mentioned, it's not uh necessarily by punishment, by by working out the differences and having those conversations. I think the problem in most situations at the is that communication is poor, and we need to develop better communication channels, teach students to listen, to understand, not listen, to respond, and to continue on that path of growing and learning as as individuals. We always should reserve the right to get smarter. I'm not perfect. I've never been perfect. I will never be perfect. But I will always do my best to listen to others' point of view, and I will always do my best to make sure that everybody feels a part of what we're going to develop here uh in the school and and this district. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reed. Our next candidate is Ms. Watki.
Thank you. So I already mentioned that Dr. Rakita Leaks and a team of um uh parents from all over the community, all different um backgrounds, as you've, you know, have explained, has worked together um extensively over the last year. Um, I was very excited to be part of the hiring of Dr. Rakita Leaks and um supporting that movement. And that team, together with uh board members and um community and teachers and staff and administrators, um have worked really hard to create that comprehensive plan, that comprehensive equity plan, which has goals um beginning now all the way through twenty twenty-three. And those goals are extensive. Um, I I can't even go through them all in two minutes, but I can highlight some of them. Uh, one of the most important things is our schools and our buildings are held accountable to um their school improvement plans. It's very important. It's a target that they set. And part of that comprehensive equity plan is that each school will have um goals surrounding um equity and inclusion that they will be accountable for and measurable over the over the course of the 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 time um that those goals are are being worked on. Um, also, we are looking at curriculum. They're doing an extensive curriculum review uh to make sure that all different uh students from all different backgrounds are included in in the curriculum. They're also um really looking closely at the culture of the buildings and making sure that the culture is welcoming and inviting and representative of all of our students. So that's important. And um, yeah, I think that uh Dr. Rakita Leaks has covered, you know, left no stone unturned. As if you've been on her committee, you would understand that there's um everything from hiring um and maintaining staff to all the things that I've mentioned are super important and something that the can the community, the district and the school board has committed resources to make sure that those things are um very important to all of us. And when we say we're to we're we're really serious about educating all students, we mean all students from all backgrounds. So uh, yeah, I could go on, but I think my time is up. So thanks.
Thank you so much. Our next candidate is Mr. Binkowski.
You're on mute. What I just said was very important. Uh, I was saying, um, this run for the board has been very humbling for me. Um, you know, I am still amazed at all of the things that I didn't know uh about the district. Um, issues that didn't touch me personally, um but have been brought to my attention by people, you know, who were wanted to get in touch with candidates to tell them about what their experience in the schools. I mean, we all have our own friends, our own communities, our own peers. You know, uh, most of that's dictated by the friends of my kids and, you know, the school that we go to, where we live. And so this shapes how we see the districts and the experiences that we're having. Um, what I found is I'm very naive about a lot of the things that are in this school. You know, my experience is very different from my next-door neighbor, which I just found out. Um, you know, but what I can do is I can listen, um, and I can learn and find out what these things are. You know, I I was really sad to find out that a lot of um students with special needs, that their need needs are just not being met. Um, and you know, it's this is is really, really sad, you know, what to hear some of these stories from these parents that have reached out. They're very passionate and we're just happy to have somebody to talk to, to to share their stories with me. Um, you know, I think that some of the stories, some of the things they told me are some issues that we can outright address, some things that, you know, they they know solutions. They have things. They know um things that they think that can happen, you know. So learning about those was was just, you know, something, that whole experience of learning about new things, you know, talking to people, I think is something that would be, uh, you know, is probably the biggest step that a lot of us can make, especially, you know, those who haven't had the experience, the opportunity to be interactive in a in a higher level like the, you know, the current board is. But, you know, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I am, you know, humbled about some of the things that are happening, and I will, you know, do my best to learn, to represent different groups, and to, uh, you know, especially acknowledge that there's a lot that I don't know, and just be open to uh helping everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your response, Mr. Binkowski. Our next candidate is Mr. Kush.
All right. Can't hear me tell me I'm on mute, but hopefully I'm not. Um, so uh I think, you know, there there's a lot of the uh the folks who spoke before me made some very good points. I think I'll break it down into three different areas, though. First is um in 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 evaluating policies, we have to listen, assess, and address. So those would be my three things. In terms of listening, um, some of the, some of that work is already underway. Um, as a board member, I was also uh involved in the hiring of Dr. Leaks and very supportive of that. Um, and she's done a phenomenal job of developing licking, listening mechanisms to understand what the needs are in the community. I don't think we can do enough of that, though. I think we need to continue to find ways to reach out. Um, Dr. Leaks' presence and the systems that she set up have done a phenomenal job of helping people feel more comfortable about sharing their perspectives um that, you know, and the different unique perspectives that everybody brings to the table. But I think we need to be continue to be proactive in reaching out and making sure that that everybody within the district feels like they have the opportunity for their voice to be heard. I think that's critical. Um, so that listening is really important. Next is assess, understanding, you know, the impact of the current policies we have. Are there disproportionate impacts? We've seen some of that in terms of achievement gaps, um, uh, looking at some uh of our looking, taking a look at all of our policies, whether that be our disciplinary policies and the impact that those have. And then trying to understand, are the policies we have um in place um fairly inequitably um are are fair and equitable in terms of addressing the needs, uh, the unique needs of everybody within the community? And then last area is really that point of addressing it. Once you've listened and understand what's going on and have making sure you have a good voice, once you've assessed the impact that the policies have, then you have to develop plans. And I think it's also part of that partnership, let um working with some of the folks who've been those voices in terms of uh identifying the challenges and helping to develop what some of those solutions look like, whether that be additional academic support that's needed in the case of the achievement gaps, but then also looking at social, emotional um uh supports and other things, especially with the pandemic. We've seen a lot of different types of needs emerge, not just academic needs, but uh economic needs and social, emotional needs as well. So making sure that we're putting plans in place to address all of those.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kush. Next is Ms. Fitzgerald.
So in the fall of twenty nineteen, there were several racist events in Naperville, both in our community and our schools. And following those events, our district held open forums so that parents and families and community members could share their lived experience. And I think the message was very clear from those forums. We had a need not just for progress, but for transformation. And our board is committed to the transformation that is necessary to ensure equitable results for students. This has been one of our most important goals. But I think as we found, though we had accomplished some progress, we had more that needed to be done. And so this June, our board passed a comprehensive resolution reaffirming our commitment to equity for all students. And there were multiple goals that were highlighted in that resolution. I'm going to go over them just briefly. Programmatic funding to achieve equitable student outcomes. So in the past, our student results have not been equitable. And in twenty seventeen, our board dedicated a two-million-dollar annual initiative to closing achievement gaps. This was because it was essential to us that every student was successful. And this this program is showing measurable results for students. We're very proud of that. In addition, we are committed to a systemic review of wholly everything: our policies, our practices, our programs, our curricula, and our culture. All of those are a part of making sure that our school communities are equitable, and we are doing that systemic review ongoing. Our curriculum review is ready to be piloted in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. We're working hard to ensure that all of our student and family voices are represented. Um, elevation of student voices to affect positive systemic change in our schools, community, and nation. It was clear over the summer, our students are leading the call for change, and we're so proud of them. And we want to ensure that we are empowering their voices. Just today, our district held a Deep Equity Institute for all of our educators. And as a part of that institute, we had student panels to talk about students' experiences because this is essential for us in ensuring... Oh, I'm out of time already. Oh, my gosh, we have so much going on in this. I I I think that you can tell our passion. Um, but I think that it also speaks to our commitment.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fitzgerald. I concur. Ms. Helm, you are next.
Great. Um, yes, and thank you so much for asking this question because I think that diversity and inclusion is something that's so important in our district. I think our differences are really what make us great. Um, I think it's really important to listen to one another and learn. Um, again, you know, keep our, keep our eyes open, keep our ears open, and learn about differences of the different people that are around us. There are a number of really great community organizations that I think the district can partner with on this um initiative. ICN, for example, on the NAACP, other community organizations, Listening to Parents. But again, keeping our our eyes and ears open and really taking into account the experiences of others in the district that might be a little bit different than we are. Um, I think it's important to also continue to educate students, their families, and staff on these cultural um and learning differences in our students. Again, as um Kristen had mentioned, the staff did, uh, you know, the um training programs and things like that for the staff are ongoing. And I think that that's really great, but I think that we need to keep it a focus to continue those training initiatives and implicit bias trainings and all of these different things. Um, in addition, I think it's really, really important to teach our students in the classroom how to have respectful conversations with one another. So that's okay if we're different, and that's okay if we don't all agree on the same thing. But it's important that we know how to talk to one another in a respectful way. Um, in addition, I think that we really need to look at the achievement gap in District Two Oh Three. Um, as we know, the pandemic has been especially hard on people of color. And so I think it's really, really important to look at that achievement gap and make sure that it's not widening during the pandemic, but instead closing and looking at ways that we can um achieve that. Finally, I think it's really important to look at our staff in the district and make sure that our students see staff members that look like them or that share the same beliefs as them, because I think that it's really important for our students to see themselves represented in the staff members. Um, I know I'm out of time, but I promise to listen and learn as a future board member, and I will never be anybody else's voice, but I do promise to amplify those that are underheard.
Thank you so much, Ms. Helm. And then our last candidate, Ms. McMillan.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, it's really exciting to hear such um very similar-minded uh people, and it's uh exciting. I think what I want to add to this is that, especially in my work as social work, is that data is really important. You know, um, it's important to have the numbers in place so that you know what your baseline is and you know where, when, and how you're improving. So for example, um, uh, the specific policies that I think are most important because you around data and also representation um is super important because, you know, having the infrastructure in place is really important, but also what you see is so um uh moving. And it's one of the first uh personal impressions that people have. So when it comes to policies, I'd really look at our hiring policies and looking at and diving into uh just the diversity of our staff and how does it represent the community that we're serving and um setting targets around that. I look at the home and school um connections and looking at how are our principals in our schools? How how much do they know about the community that they're actually serving? And what are they doing to try to engage the communities and reach out to them with language, with religion, uh, with different types of activities that appeal to the community that they're actually serving? Um, and really trying to bring them in. I look at a curricular selection, um, even books that we have, you know, and making sure that, you know, at the elementary level, if they have different books that represent and show the different religions and families and uh races and ethnicities, are are those available on our LLCs? Um, and then also thinking about restorative justice. And then with numbers, it's important to look at access to resources. Who's getting the IEPs? Who's getting the five oh fours? Who's in honors classes? Who's in um who's uh uh discipline? Who's getting expelled? Who's getting suspended? You know, um, historically, it's usually people that are uh black and brown. And so we want to make sure we have that little number at district level and that we're um countering those and and have the knowledge and don't ignore it. So that's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that powerful answer. We're going to go on to our next round. The question is, what measures would you take to ensure that curriculum and instruction that is selected... The question is, what measures would you take to ensure that curriculum and instruction that is selected does not feed into implicit bias against any marginalized groups? Again, what measures would you take to ensure that curriculum and instruction that is selected does not feed into implicit bias against any marginalized groups? We'd like to start with Ms. Watki.
Okay. Well, I covered a little bit of this already in my last question, but, um, I think it's really important that we, um, do a curricular review and make sure that all of, um, and that's something that we're working on currently, um, as part of that comprehensive equity plan that we're looking through the curriculum and making sure that all, um, uh, all of our community is represented within that curriculum. And then I think it's important too, to make sure that we look at, um, like you mentioned, the, um, making sure it doesn't lend itself to implicit bias. And so we have worked really hard and, and hope to continue to work really hard on. I think that comes, um, from the teachers and from the staff. And so making sure that our teachers and our staff are, are trained and understanding, um, what implicit biases they may have of, of their own. We've done a few exercises as a board and it's really quite interesting to, you know, as you, and, and I've done some of those with the, um, diversity and inclusion committee. And knowing those, what your implicit bias are, is one step towards making sure that that doesn't filter into your curriculum. So, um, you know, we have Illinois standards that are set by the state to meet and that, but the curriculum itself is done on a local level. So teachers work very closely to develop the curriculum for our students. And if they're not aware of their own implicit bias, then that can easily filter into, um, some of the curriculum. So I think training and professional development is the key to being sure that that doesn't filter into the curriculum because the decisions are being made by our teachers and our staff. So, um, yeah, and I just think making sure that we're continually, um, changing and adapting and, and looking at what's new and available, uh, so that we always are following best practice with our curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your answer. Our next candidate, Mr. Reed.
Sure. Thank you. I, I think that the first thing we have to do is recognize the fact that we do have biases, right? Everybody unconsciously has biases. Um, it's used throughout the course of, uh, history and shown that, that it exists, right? So we have to admit that we have the bias. Uh, the good news is, is that you can learn from that, right? And you learn from that by, you know, figuring out that they're there and how they're done so that you can then prime and ensure that they're not used going forward for making decisions. Most of the decisions we make, um, all unfortunately also have those, those biases because we have those biases. So we need to utilize structures and other groups like yourselves to understand that if we are making decisions, what kind of impact it has on the various cultures, uh, that they go along with. So, uh, books, uh, for example, um, hiring of new, uh, organizations to, to work with the schools. We need to look at those decisions, start, uh, utilizing the resources that we have for those and then making sure that they fit in the structural needs of our organization, but in the structural needs of our children and the, the various cultures that they have. I, I think that, you know, it's, it's easy to talk about and harder to implement without utilizing people of various colors, races and creeds to get through that bias when we're doing these types of things. And I, I don't know that we're listening to all those voices yet. Uh, you know, uh, as much as we've done, uh, it's still apparently a, a big topic because it's not there yet. And I don't know if that's because we're not listening to enough people or enough groups, or we just need to implement. But ultimately, the focus that your group has had on this this evening shows that we have a lot more to go and we need to be listening a lot more and making less decisions in haste. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, for your response. Our next candidate is Ms. McMillan.
Um, thank you. Um, implicit bias is something that, um, everyone has and that we have to continuously be very intentional about addressing. Um, one of the things that since the board does make decisions about, um, curriculum, um, is I think that, uh, as part of regular onboarding, every single board member should, um, receive implicit bias training. And that should be just a regular, um, uh, ongoing training that, um, board and staff continue to have on a regular basis. It's great that they're doing it now with the staff. I'd just like to see that as a, a regular, um, uh, thing on a, a regular basis. Um, I think that when it comes to selection of, um, uh, you know, curriculum as well, engaging, um, key stakeholders, utilizing our diversity committee, um, that also impoles in, uh, groups of students and also key stakeholders like ICN, the NAACP, et cetera, other interested groups, um, to help provide consultation about what should be, uh, represented would be, um, uh, important. And then, um, also to, um, help, uh, you know, our teachers not only, uh, recognize implicit bias, but also being able to feel comfortable to talk about, um, you know, how do we address biases when they come up in the classrooms and also conflict resolution, uh, because, you know, uh, some, um, people might not feel as comfortable about how do we address this? And so they just want to avoid it altogether. Um, but it's important to be able to address it directly. So those are some of my thoughts. Thank you.
I apologize. My prayer alarm clock went off. One of the challenges of hosting from home, so apologize. Um, our next candidate, Ms. Helm.
Um, great. Thank you so much. So as others had, uh, as others have mentioned, I think that, again, it is a constant effort to kind of check ourselves and make sure that any of these implicit biases, that we're working on those within ourselves, because again, we all have them. Um, and I think it's really important to admit that and to work towards, um, kind of correcting some of those biases. I think in terms of the curriculum and instruction, I think it's very important to have review boards look over the, um, curriculum. I think that we need to make sure that those boards consist of people of different races, different ethnicities, religion, socioeconomic statuses, different gender identities, um, making sure that, uh, again, that all of our students are, feel represented, um, through these materials and that we don't find implicit biases, um, in the materials that we're showing to our students. Again, getting that feedback from the community, um, I think is also really important and listening. Um, and also as others have mentioned, I think it is very important to continue that implicit bias, bias training, not just for, you know, our staff members, but those are things that we can also work with our students on as well. Um, I think it's really, really important, as I previously had mentioned, to have conversations. I think a lot of people are scared because they feel like they might say the wrong thing, or they might do the wrong thing, or they might ask a question in an offensive way. But again, I think it's important to have respectful conversations so we can all make sure that we're, you know, understanding each other. I think multicultural education is really important. And so the curriculum and instruction in District 203 is a really great way that we can, um, really, you know, encapsulate all cultures. Um, so I, I hope that going forward, we can go ahead and, um, take a look at the curriculum and instruction and remove any implicit biases.
Thank you so much for your answer, Ms. Helm. Our next candidate, Mr. Binkowski.
Yeah. Um, thank you. Um, so I think, uh, you know, something we could consider is take a hierarchical approach to looking at the curriculum that addresses, you know, all of the different stakeholders here. Um, you know, obviously ensuring that we're following state standards is going to be important. Uh, getting feedback and soliciting input from external groups such as yourself to actually get, you know, understand from different points of view, you know, what we're looking at, what this means for different people. You know, I think that, uh, obviously teachers who are the ones who will be delivering the curriculum need to have, uh, a strong say in this. You know, um, I think that training, you know, teacher training, uh, will be important for them to be able to recognize, you know, things that they might not pick up because of their own, you know, uh, cultural biases or, uh, you know, their particular situations. So, you know, understanding that if we have the teachers being able to identify it, it will trickle down then. You know, um, I think probably one of the biggest things that we could do is, you know, really take a, a hard look at the community, uh, you know, the parents, the families that are in the school to review materials. You know, I always hear parents say they want to say more. They want to have a lot of input. They want to have, give some feedback. They don't know, you know, how to do that, what's appropriate. They don't know exactly what kind of power or influence that they can have over the curriculum, you know? They, they want to know what's happening in school and, you know, unfortunately for a lot of families, you know, the curriculum, the materials that they bring home, that their students bring home or the comments that they make is the only interaction that they have. You know, so I think that, um, you know, involving the parents, you know, earlier, understanding what their kids are going to be, you know, learning about, previewing that for them, getting the feedback right away from the parents. You know, I think a, a big issue here is that, you know, um, parents, you know, they, they grew up at a different time. They don't have some of the experiences that we have or some of the things that our, our kids are learning in the school. And so, you know, they're not receiving the same kind of, uh, or they don't have the same mindset that we're trying to instill. What this can do is actually, this can, you know, put this in a situation where, you know, you know, the district is doing wonderful things at school, but the parents might be undermining some of that at home. So I think we really need to reach out to the families, keep them involved, maybe even extend some of those training opportunities like today's meeting, um, you know, to families of the district. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Binkowski. Our next candidate, Mr. Kush.
Yeah, I think a lot, a lot of, a lot of great things have been said, so I'll just reiterate a couple of things. One, you know, we all have biases and I think we need to remember that. I think it's really important that because we know that, that we are creating an environment where we can highlight some of these things and make sure that we're turning that unconscious bias into, you know, to making folks more aware and conscious of the biases that we all have so that we can then address them. Uh, and doing it in a way that doesn't, uh, create a punitive situation for people simply asking a question. You know, one of the things that came out of, um, some of the events this past summer, um, on a national scale with, uh, with George Floyd. Um, you know, I just say that in, in, in the workplace, uh, the place where I work, it, it prompted a lot of, quite, a lot of dialogue. And a lot of people were asking and coming to me and asking me questions that they previously, you know, either were afraid to ask or didn't want to know. And I think we need to make sure that, uh, we are providing the forum where people can, can openly learn to understand what some of those differences are. Um, you know, we all have biases and, and they're unconscious biases. So how do we turn them into conscious biases so that we can address them within ourselves? I think it's also important to get feedback from the community, uh, making sure that, you know, those groups who are at risk of being marginalized or have historically been marginalized are looking at materials and understanding so that there might be things in there that, 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 that folks who are not necessarily as sensitive to these biases don't see. But those who are impacted by them directly, they do see. So we can bring that and we can all make sure that we're addressing it. And then, um, you know, we talked about, others have talked about making sure the staff is aware because it's not just having a good curriculum and a curriculum that's real biased, but making sure that even an unbiased curriculum can be delivered with some bias. And so we need to make sure that there's that unconscious bias training for the staff, uh, and then also within the community, uh, so that folks understand that. I think the overall thing here is it's really important to lean into this. This is not one that we can be reactive to. We should really lean into it to root out some of the biases that exist, to identify them and uncover them, because only by uncovering them can we then address them.
Thank you so much for your answer, Mr. Kush. And then our last candidate, Ms. Fitzgerald.
So we are already in the process of revising our curriculum to ensure that it's representative of our student body and our nation's diverse history. Um, we are working with the Great Lakes Equity Center to train our curriculum leaders. And the goal of this is to ensure that all of our policies, practices, interactions and resources are representative, representative of, constructed by and responsive to all people so that every individual has access to meaningful participation in and positive outcomes from high-quality learning experiences regardless of their individual characteristics or group memberships. And so how do we get from here to there? So I think there's work that goes in ahead. Um, hiring is, is important. Hiring and retaining a diverse staff is going to help our staff be reflective of our, our students and help that process. That's something that we're really paying attention to. We just established affinity groups so that we can be sure that our staff have a voice and are staying as a member of our staff. You know, and then we have them on our team and then we're working to train our teams. We've already talked about the implicit bias training. We have also, in each school, established deep, deep equity teams that are looking even more deeply at each school's practice and implementation of their curriculum. Then we're working to pick up our sources, change our sources, choose new sources, ensure that those curriculum sources are representative of our students and relevant to them. And so we want to ensure that those sources are, are, are the kinds of things that are going to intrigue students and that the students will see themselves. As well, we want to ensure that when we are talking about complex material, that our staff are prepared and are able to talk about the kinds of feelings that come up for our students. I think as well, then we pilot that curriculum. So we're in the process with our teams. We're working on that curriculum selection right now, but then we pilot. And that's where we get more feedback from our students, from our families, from our diversity advisory committee to ensure that our goals are being met, that, that, that the ideals that we've set forth are actually being realized in our curriculum. And so that's why it's such a complex process, but one that I'm so excited about because I think when we get to the end of this, we will have the kind of curriculum that is representative of our students and families and that ensures that it is also representative of our nation's diverse history.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fitzgerald. And our last question for this evening. How will you, as a school board member, work, work towards progress and healing post-pandemic for our school community? Again, how will you, as a school board member, work towards progress and healing post-pandemic for our school community? Our first candidate, Mr. Binkowski.
Sure. Um, I think, you know, despite, uh, all of the, uh, bad things about this pandemic, uh, health-related reasons and whatnot, one of the hardest things, um, for parents to, uh, or that have happened, you know, is the way parents feel that they were, didn't understand what was happening with the schools. Um, I think that communication, you know, between the district and the parents, you know, while meaningful, you know, meaning, well-meaning and stuff, there's a lot lost along the way. And so I think, you know, issues of confusion, not understanding, um, you know, not engaging the community in a way, in ways that didn't feel very authentic. You know, that really led to a lot of frustrations and of course, a lot of this is boiling over. Um, you know, I think that when we get back, I think a really big deal will be for, uh, you know, the district to really take a look at some of those communication issues to make sure it doesn't happen again. You know, um, uh, another thing that I think is, uh, is going to be important is that, lost my thought for a second here, is I think we should actually have, um, a community-driven kind of retrospective about the pandemic in general, about return to learn plan. Look at all the things that happened. And I think this needs to come from the community. Get people, stakeholders, you know, people who are interested in sharing their points of view, collecting data, you know, asking questions, going around, getting a sense of, you know, I know that the, the district understands or they know how it went from their point of view, how some families went. It was different for everybody. So I think if we bring the community together, we have this kind of retrospective analysis and see what happened. Then we can understand, you know, where were their problems? Where were their successes? Where were their failures? You know, there were a lot of successes. There were great things. Um, you know, some of those things are kind of hidden in, you know, some of the failures. So, you know, I think that bringing that together, giving the community back their voice, giving them back the feeling of transparency and communication with the district will be probably the biggest thing that'll make everybody happy. Everybody has the same goal of getting the kids safely back to school. You know, I think that when it happens, it'll be fantastic. And then to have a really good understanding of what worked, what didn't work and how we can move forward and make things better.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Our next candidate, Ms. Helm.
Okay, great. Um, thank you so much. So I think that this is a really great question because I think, um, one thing that I've been really trying to do during the pandemic is look towards the future. Um, I think it is really important to focus on things that we're going to do going forward because I think that, you know, our students and our community is going to need a lot of healing after the pandemic. Um, however, I do believe that also progress was made. So, um, to start with kind of some of the positives, I think that it was fun watching my daughter do some of her e-learning and seeing some of the ways that, um, the teachers were able to just get creative and, and use technology, maybe new technology that they might not have knew about before, um, to engage the students remotely. And so I think that that is one positive that hopefully our teachers can take with them going forward, um, some of the new technology and things like that, like that, that they've learned during the pandemic. In terms of healing, I think number one for me is helping students recover from the learning loss due to the pandemic. Obviously, the pandemic was nobody's fault and I believe that the district did the best that we could given the situation at hand. Um, that being said, it's just been really, really hard for me as a parent and a community member, talking with other parents, hearing about how our kids have been struggling. So looking at ways that we could help, such as offering more academic resources and things like that for our kids that are struggling, offering, um, different like support groups. Or again, like I said before, the mental health services to the students that are struggling. I think all of those things are really, really important, but more than anything, I think the thing that, um, you know, for me personally, from what I've talked to with my daughter and from what I've talked to with, you know, other friends and things in the community, I think that we've all just felt really, really isolated and alone during the pandemic. And so I think one of the biggest things when our kids are returning to school to foster a kind of, you know, that, that healing is just making everybody feel like we're a community once again, um, encouraging students to get engaged. is just making everybody feel like we're a community once again, um, encouraging students to get engaged with one another and just making sure that we have programs in place so that our students just don't feel alone. Um, so those are some things that I would do in terms of healing from the pandemic and the progress we've made.
Thank you so much for your answer. Mr. Reed, if you go next, please.
Sure, thank you. So I think the first thing we need to do is reinstate the trust with the parents, uh, students and the various organizations throughout our districts. Um, I, I feel like a lot of times, most of us felt like we were talked to instead of talked with about what was going on with our children and the programs. I feel that we need to be providing more of the why as to why some of these decisions were made and less of the, here's how it's going to be. I think we need to listen more to our teachers. Um, I've spoke with numerous teachers and I've heard that uh, basically they were told how things were going to go and they had to figure out how to implement it quickly. Um, that's just the feeling they had. I, I think we need to figure out uh, to, to some of the other candidates' choices or comments on where the children are at academically. I think what we're not talking about is where they are emotionally. And I think we need to assess that. I think we need to understand that and then figure out what we need to do to bring that up to the level it needs to be. We talk a lot about the fact that the children aren't uh, academically where they would theoretically be if we were in class full-time right now by this time, but we don't talk about where their growth is emotionally and where they should be at, especially in our younger grades. I think we need to develop outreach programs so that all students feel that uh, they're not alone and they have various uh, brief means and, and opportunities to discuss things with various students and other individuals. And I think ultimately, we need to relook at our, our extracurricular activities. We are a very sports-driven uh, you know, district and that's fine. Um, but I think what this pandemic has done has taught us that we have other interests and other things that the students like to do. Um, and I think we need to have more of those opportunities for those students that aren't necessarily just sports-driven, uh, to have ways to have outlets and, and things to help them feel engaged again and feel a part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your response. Our next candidate, Ms. McMillan.
Thank you uh, for the question. Thank you again for this evening. Um, I would say, you know, being a social worker and one of the things that our organization has done that has been really important for working with people, especially on the front lines, is um, providing training around uh, the impact uh, what COVID has done in regards to collective community trauma. Um, you know, this uh, pandemic has been exceptional and, and creating fear about getting sick. Uh, many people have lost people or gotten sick themselves, they've lost housing, um, there's food insecurities, they've lost jobs. Um, there's a lot of um, components that we have, are all uh, experiencing, but are, uh, because of our isolation, don't realize the connectedness that we have. And so I think like having a training around um, the collective trauma about COVID and, and, and having a level of understanding is one way to raise awareness and, and bring people together. And I think the, uh, when you're talking about healing, um, bringing together and building, rebuilding those relationships in intentional ways, using like, using our schools um, to have different types of um, uh, community-building uh, events to bring parents together, to bring students together, to help rebuild those relationships. Um, and then in regards to um, having ongoing listening sessions available, and I think that Zoom has been a great platform to engage parents a lot more easily and to have those on a regular basis to hear from parents and from students about how are we doing as we're coming back, what else do we need to do, and have those ongoing sessions and, and know that it's available to them, that we are here to listen to them. And then also, um, as uh, Mr. Reed mentioned, I think also having those social-emotional things because social-emotional learning is about building relationships and self-regulation within students and uh, how we connecting with each other. And then for the older students, especially around mental health services to help with the depression, anxiety, um, that a lot of students have um, uh, been experiencing and has been elevated through this pandemic. And so that we have those resources in place so that they can easily access them within our schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McMillan. Our next candidate, Ms. Fitzgerald.
I think this is really a great question. Um, District 203 has always been known for its strong partnership with our community and it absolutely does, we do need to ensure it, the community partnership is healed because that is what is going to ensure that all of our goals for students are met. That is one of the most important things to be able to make that work. Um, I think it was very challenging for us going into the pandemic that we were at a time of incredible social isolation, isolation when we were facing one of the most difficult challenges we've faced as a school community. Parents most trust their principal and their teacher to tell them information and they're able to have a two-way interchange with them that they can trust. We had to utilize, because of the unique time that we were at, our board meetings as a delivery mechanism for much of our information, which was inherently difficult because it wasn't two-way. And so I think as we have gone forward, we've been able to improve by allowing parents to have more opportunities with their principals, more opportunities with the board and the district leadership to be able to ask the kind of questions that they need to ask and get the answers that they need. I think that that has improved the communication, but there's more to be done. I think this has been a tremendously difficult time for our whole community. It's a time of loss, it's a time of change, and that's for kids, it's for parents, it's for teachers. And that's something that I think we're very aware of and our efforts to increase resiliency and to talk about emotional wellness for each of us, for parents and for families, and to help parents have the tools that they need to support their kids, that's essential for restoring, restoration and healing of all. I think as well, parents' um, deep concerns, it is, is what is motivating right, them right now in terms of their students and ensuring that their students' needs are met, that's their top priority. That's our top priority too for District 203. And as we are able to roll out the additional programming for both academic growth as well as meeting those social and emotional needs, um, we are right now assessing our kids, finding out where they are needing the most support and providing that support, hiring more counselors, looking at additional tutoring programs, all that they're going to need to be able to recover that growth. But I think we have many things ongoing and I think when we develop these positive solutions, we have to continue with them so that we're able to put in the effort and time to ensure that we have the trust and that we rebuild our community partnership.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fitzgerald. Our next candidate, Ms. Wackey.
Well, thank you for the question. I think um, progressing towards healing um, post-pandemic has to start before post-pandemic. We've got to start now and, and we have started already in the past. And I think that there's two components to this that are very important, um, communication and meeting students' needs. And so um, I'll address both of those. So students' needs, um, as my colleague said, we're currently addressing what the um, what the learning academic loss may have been for our students. And then from that, we will have to address how to support those students with additional programming, um, additional support staff or whatever is needed to be able to do that. Um, I want to assure the community that the board currently and, um, if I were elected, continue to support those resources that are needed to be able to do that. That's never been an issue. Um, we've, we've always committed to whatever the students need. So um, I think that also involves um, the um, uh, we have a nationally-known social-emotional learning program and uh, addressing the, the needs of students and their mental health is really important as they get back to school. On the other side of that is the communication piece that I um, just mentioned. And I think that uh, we're currently, current, things that we're doing currently will have to also progress and, and we'll have to do more. Um, currently, we've done focus groups with each um, uh, building with our superintendent and some board members have been involved in those as well, hearing from the community and the needs and what it is that they um, have questioned um, beyond uh, what we're getting um, in email and, and just having a dialogue, an open dialogue is important. Um, Focus 203 is a way of a community engagement that we've used in the past, um, when we're and that would be something absolutely done post-pandemic because it's a large group activity where we get the feedback from this, from the um, from the community. We're also working really hard on creating some resilience training for students, staff, and the community through our optimistic school uh, programming that we've committed to. I think this listening and finding a balance, there's never um, two sides to uh, any kind of decision that we make. There's always like fifty sides to whatever issue that we're making a decision on. So um, having that um, as part of our understanding.
Thank you so much for your response. And our last candidate for this evening, Mr. Kush.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank again the ICN for this opportunity. I think this is the last question, but um, and, and many things have been said by other candidates. I, I just, I'll focus on just a few things. And one is, you know, we have to recognize and, and in, in conjunction with the community, community, recognize that the world has changed. Uh, and I hear a lot of people saying, you know, we have to get back to and get back to, you know, I, I'm not as much interested in getting back as I'm interested in moving forward. And I think that, you know, part of what the school district uh, can do is we're going to have to really rethink, you know, what a school district can do to help meet some of the needs. Um, you know, we're, we're about education. And so yes, it's about, uh, it's about creating a, a, you know, the right curriculum, academic environment. You know, we've talked about social-emotional learning, but we really need to broaden our thinking in terms of, you know, understanding the range of needs that this pandemic has uncovered. Um, someone earlier mentioned about food insecurity and things like that. And that's not something that we've historically, we've historically done some things around that, but the, 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 the range and breadth of what some of those um, needs are within the community has really been exposed. Uh, and I think it'd be a shame if we didn't learn the lessons uh, from those lessons of the pandemic. It wasn't just about the kids weren't in school uh, because uh, of health safety. Obviously, those were concerns as well. But I think it really did uncover um, the need for a broader range of communication vehicles. Folks have brought up the idea, the concept of needing to communicate more. The district communicates a lot, but until everyone feels like they've been communicated to, we're not doing it enough. And so we need to continue to invest in additional communication vehicles so that everybody is communicated to in a way that they feel comfortable accessing important information. So that's going to be critical. Um, you know, remote learning is something that is probably going to be here to stay in some level of component uh, and being able to continue to invest to be able to deliver curriculum through remote, remote means. Whether that means we do that when there's a snow day and so the, the students continue to maintain that learning and some of those programs are still in place. So I think it's important for us to really take stock of the lessons we've learned through the pandemic. Uh, one example that I will highlight is recently, um, leveraging the creativity, leveraging the platform, we have a STEM program that we just approved um, uh, in partnership with uh, the DuPage Children's Museum. Um, to again, leverage what we've learned, leverage the platform that we have to be able to continue to spark that interest. Because ultimately, this is going to be about how we continue, continue to progress our students. Pandemic, no pandemic, we have to make sure that whatever we put in place is going to keep our students moving forward so that they're equipped to be successful at the next level and tap in and maximize the unlimited potential that every child has.
Thank you so much for your answer, Mr. Kush. Well, um, this concludes our evening for this, uh, for tonight. Um, Ms. Muniba, if you could just pull up the candidate contact uh, list. And as you pull that up, um, just would like to close um, with some remarks. We really want to thank the candidates uh, today. It truly is inspiring to see how you are all rolling up your sleeves, investing so much time and energy in serving our school community and all as volunteers. It's truly incredible. Thank you so much for your presence today. Also, we'd like to thank all our viewers at home, all the families who invested uh, time this evening. Also, they can view um, this, you know, later on as well as this is a recorded event. I am very grateful for our community members like yourselves who want to educate themselves on each candidate prior to them rocking their vote. Again, election day is April 6th. You can do early voting as well and mail-in ballots. Lastly, we really want to thank District 203 for partnering with ICN School District Engagement Committee. This is a powerful power partnership, working towards progress so marginalized students, like Muslim students, feel safe and included within their school communities. So again, thank you so much to District 203, to all of our candidates. And we really just want to close this event with a quote from Malcolm X. And he says, "Education is the passport for the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today." Thank you so much again. And um, Muniba, were you able to pull up that screen before we close?
Um, I just need to be made the presenter.
Okay.
Share my screen.
Okay, that way our community um, is able to contact our candidates here if they have any further questions. Unfortunately, because of, you know, the situation with virtual, we're not able to have question-answer. But um, to all of our viewers at home, you can contact um, ICN School District Engagement Committee via email. Um, it's also on ICN's webpage. Um, and then here are all our candidates here. Um, so again, thank you so much for your time, for your attention. Um, and again, thank you so much to all of our candidates for their time and energy this evening. Good night, God bless, and Assalamualaikum.